Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our Tuesday, April 5th, 2022, Clay County Plan and Zoning Meeting. A few housekeeping rules, please. Tonight, we will hear two cases. We will begin with a report from the planning and zoning staff that will summarize each case prior to any discussion the board members may have. We will then ask the applicant to step up to the podium to ask or answer any questions and present support of their application. We ask the applicant to begin by stating their name and address for the record as these meetings are recorded. We will then ask for any public participation that may support the case being heard, and then anyone that may oppose the case being heard. Again, we ask any participant to begin by stating their name and address. And please remember, the topic of discussion needs to remain pertinent to the case being heard. The purpose of the Plan and Zoning Board is to hear the cases and make recommendations to the Clay County Commission. The commission will review and decide the cases heard tonight on April 20th, 2022, at 3:00 PM in this room. Could we begin tonight with a roll call of attendance?
Yes, Chairman. Terry Griffin?
Present.
David Rotis?
Present.
Chris Higgins?
Present.
Brad Scarlett?
Present.
Marvin Davis?
Present.
Chairman Tom Decker?
Present.
And could we have a motion to approve the minutes of our March 1st meeting as presented?
I'll move to approve.
Very well, do you have a second?
Second.
A roll call of vote?
Marvin Davis?
Approve.
David Rotis?
Approve.
Terry Griffin?
Approve.
Chris Higgins?
Abstain.
Brad Scarlett?
Abstain.
And Chairman Tom Decker?
Approved.
Motion carries.
The first case we will hear tonight is case number April 22-122-RZ/P. And could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Chairman, would like to add the staff report as part of the official record.
So be it.
So, this is the case number April 22-122-RZ-P, Eastern Estates. Currently, I've got it pulled up on the screen, currently, it consists of lots 8 and 9 of Burton Estates. It's zoned R1A, it's approximately 33.75 acres. It was rezoned from R1 to R1A in 2007, and Burton Estates was recorded in 2003. The proposal is for 19 lots, again, it's up on the screen. Lots 1 through 18, which would be around the two cul-de-sacs that would be part of the infrastructure that would be installed, are from .92 to 1.22 acres, and they would be zoned RU40, which is the standard for that lot size. Lot 19, which has the existing home, would be 11.15 acres, and it would be zoned R1, which is our current standard for lots between 10 and 20 acres. The proposal is to connect the sewer to the Timber Creek Sewer, or the sewer plant that's managed by Timber Creek, that's part of the Johnson Ridge subdivision. This plan is, also includes a landscape easement, which you can see is highlighted in green, and there was a landscape plan that was submitted by the applicant. And there's stormwater detention as part of Tract A, so this is not a lot over here in the southeast corner. The detention pond is in this area, there's a blue line stream that runs through there. You'll probably remember from the previous case that one of the concerns that staff had was that this blue line stream was awful close to the road. They've made some changes there where it's a bigger setback, and then the existing pond on the large lot would be used for stormwater detention as well. The 2008 comprehensive plan tells us that this is located in the urban services tier, it's within a mile of the city of Kansas City. KCMO has stated that they have no objections to Eastern Estates. The intent of this tier is to promote urban development compatible with cities. The residential uses in this tier include suburban density and urban density. Suburban density is moderate density on municipal level services, up to four units per acre, and urban density is development on municipal level services greater than four units per acre. The surrounding area, so the subject parcel is highlighted in yellow, you have the Johnson Ridge subdivision to the north, the lots to the west are generally between 10 and 20 acres, and then there's still some large acreage you can see in the area as well, and then also some three to five acre lots, kind of to the south and east. As with any rezoning or preliminary plat, there are rezoning criteria and preliminary plat criteria. The Land Development Code states that the rezoning criteria, review and decision-making bodies should consider these five criteria. The first one talks about correcting an error or inconsistency or meeting the challenge of a changing condition in the area. The second criteria talks about the proposal being consistent with the comprehensive plan and the stated purpose of Section 151-1.7. Third criteria talks about proposed zoning district as a whole allows development that is compatible with existing uses and zoning of nearby property. Fourth one talks about basically whether utility service providers or the county is able to provide adequate facilities to the subject parcel while maintaining adequate levels of service to the existing development. And the last criteria talks about would this create significant adverse impacts on other property in the area, including environment, air, water, noise, stormwater management, and natural resources. And then the two preliminary plat criteria, the Land Development Code states that a plat must meet these two criteria. The guidance on the rezoning is we should consider these, but the plating says you have to meet these two criteria, which includes whether the subdivision complies with the zoning regulations of the district in which it's located, and it meets all the infrastructure requirements of Section 151-8, and all other applicable standards of the Land Development Code. And then the second criteria is kind of a rehash of one of the rezoning criteria, whether we can provide sufficient facilities and services to the development and the adjacent properties. The process for this case is staff published this in the Courier Tribune. Property owners within 1,000 feet were sent certified letters, there were 52 total letters for this case. Rezoning sign was posted on site. This has to follow the major subdivision section of Land Development Code, which includes several steps. The first step that we're considering tonight is the rezoning preliminary plat. If that is approved by the county commission, the next step would be for the developer to submit construction plans. The county on-call engineer would review those plans. After those plans are reviewed, the next step is for the final plat to be submitted, which would include coming in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission and County Commission for a second set of meetings. After that is approved, if it's approved, the infrastructure could be installed by the developer, and once the infrastructure is approved and all conditions are met, the final plat could be recorded, and that's when lots are able to be sold and building permits issued. Outside agency review, we reached out to the Highway Department, they stated that no traffic impact study is required, and all the lots except 19, which is the large lot, will be accessed from the interior streets. We talked about Timber Creek Sewer, they've stated that the existing plant has a capacity of 40,000 gallons a day. Currently, they process roughly 13,800. The additional homes would bring that total to 19,200. The Water District has stated they have the ability to serve the lots, the developer would be responsible for paying for the water main extension. The Smithville Fire District provided comments on the hydrants and the diameter of the cul-de-sac, and as I stated earlier, the city of Kansas City said they had no objections. So, want to talk about the required infrastructure for this proposed subdivision. It's in the RU zoning district, it would be required to have asphalt curb and gutter, hooked up to the water supply district, have hydrants. Septic is not an option for this size lot, they have to hook up to a package plant, which is what they're proposing, and then sidewalks are required on both sides of the new interior streets. In the previous case, we provided some density numbers, we've done the same for this case, we've compared it to Johnson Ridge, which comes out to 2.28 acres per lot. Johnson Ridge was done as a conservation district, so they have a large amount of open space. This proposal cannot go through as a conservation district because you have to have 50 acres to be able to do that. If you take out the open space of Johnson Ridge and only include lot sizes, then the lot sizes average 1.15 acres. For Eastern Estates, with the 19 lots and 33.75 acres, they average 1.78 acres. If we do the lots only and we take out, if I go back to this other slide, we take out Tract A and the detention area and the streets, and we just average the lots, then we end up with 1.49. And then if we take out Lot 19, because it is quite a bit larger than the other lots, we have the 18 lots, 17.1 acres, they average .95 acres. And I do want to say, if you're looking at the staff report, staff made a mistake, we copied this table from the previous report, this says Lot 22 in the staff report, because the previous submittal was 22 lots, this submittal's for 19 lots, so I apologize for missing that. Some additional information, we received multiple phone calls from adjacent property owners that expressed their opposition to this report. There is an opposition letter that's attached to the staff report, and Angie is passing out another, just short letter, that's from that same property owner, they just wanted to clarify their comments, but we didn't get this until Friday of last week. Landscape plan, as I said, was submitted by the applicant, and the, we talked about that blue line stream where the setback is larger, so that takes some of staff's concern about that blue line stream out of the way. And the previous submittal was 22 lots, the current submittal's 19 lots. Staff's recommending approval with conditions, there's 15 total conditions, I'm not going to go through all those. They include the landscaping being completed before the final plat is recorded, any lighting shall be directed downward, we're going to vacate a utility easement with the final plat if this is approved, we're going to require a third-party inspector when the infrastructure's being installed, and the HOA would be responsible for the stormwater infrastructure and the maintenance of all of that as well. So that is by no means the whole staff report, that's some of the highlights. Shane and I would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have, and I know we have several folks that want to speak, and I think we have a couple of presentations that will be presented as well.
All right, very well, thank you, Kip. Do any of the board members have questions for staff? Would, we need to, would the applicant's rep come up, is that correct?
Yeah, if there's no questions for staff, I'll move out of the way, and the applicant has a presentation.
Yep, if there's no questions from the board for staff, if the applicant's or the applicant's rep wants to step up to the podium, be good, please, might turn on the microphone, very well.
Good evening, Chair Decker and members, my name is Melissa Vancom with Rouse Fretz White Goss Law Firm, 4510 Bellevue Avenue, Kansas City, Missouri, 64111. I'm here today representing the applicant, Gurkin Properties LLC, owned by Mr. Gurkin, who lives on the property that's subject to the applications. And since Mr. Gurkin is a neighbor to many of those who you'll hear speaking today, he wants to go ahead and say a few words while I go ahead and get the presentation set up over there.
Sure.
So, let him start now.
All right. Hello, my name is Richard Gurkin, I live at 13300 Northeastern Avenue, and that's in Smithville mailing address. I own the 33-acre parcel that this is the subject of this application. I bought this property in 2003 with the initial intent to divide off what I considered to be extra property. Though I'm not a developer, I am a property owner that seeks to redevelop this, replat this property that I own where I live, and will continue to live. I'm also a business owner here in Liberty. I was asked about my trade, my skills, how does it apply to developing, building homes, and so I thought I would elaborate on that. I've been in business for 41 years. I am a licensed building contractor with a, I think it's a Class D Building Contractors License, one to four family homes. I'm also electrical and a plumbing contractor, and I have the contractors license in those categories. I've been in business 41 years with a total of 45 years building and construction experience, and currently, my company Gurkin Construction Services is located in Liberty. We're active in the building, construction, and remodeling business. Additionally, I own and operate an RV park and have residential investment properties. I'd like to thank the Clay County Planning and Zoning Staff, the committee, Art Aiken with AGC Engineers, Jim Bowers, Melissa Vancom with Rouse Fretz White Goss Gentile Roads PC for their help in the creation and promotion of my Eastern Estates project. I would also like to thank all my support group that took their time to show up here in favor of the project, their friends, family, concerned citizens of Clay County. We're all interested in seeing the fair application of the Land Development Code applied to Eastern Estates project. Eastern Estates is planned to be a high-end private community consisting of 18 lots, average .95 acres in size, plus significant green space and surrounding open acreage. The price point will begin at what is now the top end of the average home values in our area. Once completed, Eastern Estates will be a premier private community in the area. As I said, I currently live on the property and will be the largest adjoining neighbor. It is my intent to create optimum living for the 18 new lots while promoting the beauty and harmony of the Northeastern Avenue area. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gurkin. We will extend an opportunity to, if you choose to rebuttal, any public participation as we get further into the meeting, so if you'd like to proceed.
Sure. Thank you, Richard. Also with us today are Art Aiken of AGC Engineers, my colleague Jim Bowers, and I also understand there's some representatives of Timber Creek that had planned to attend as well in case the members have any questions for them as the wastewater district that will be representing, that's proposed to be handling that system.
Sure.
This is a proposal for a rezoning from the R1A district to the R40 district for lots 1 through 18, and the R1 district for the existing, Lot 19 with the existing home on it, and also the preliminary plat approval. The property is just over one mile from the Kansas City, Missouri city limits, near to both 291 and 435 on Eastern Road and 132nd Street. As a little bit of background, there was a preliminary and final plat approved in 2007, but it expired during the recession. There were nine three-acre lots that were approved on septic at that time, and this proposal adds just nine additional lots. There was an extension obtained, however, in the period that the recession extended for quite some time, it did expire. And this is the last in a line of proposals that Mr. Gurkin has brought forth for this property over the years, including four three-acre lots, followed by the nine three-acre lots, and they've all been opposed by neighbors, including some of the very same neighbors that didn't like the three-acre lots either. However, a lot has changed since that time. The development has continued in the area, including the obvious development to the north of Johnson Ridge. There were 104 units that were originally approved there, with under half that have been developed, and there's other subdivisions that have been platted in the surrounding area. Notably, the county adopted a new comprehensive plan and zoning code, since that happened, the Land Development Code was adopted in 2011, and that changed the policy significantly to disfavor these two and three-acre lot sizes. The comprehensive plan supports up to four acres a lot, which would be 80 acres here. Mr. Gurkin is proposing 18 lots, just nine more than previously approved over 15 years ago. Certain things have not changed since that time, such as the opposition. We have seen much less opposition to this proposal than came forth for Johnson Ridge. However, the neighbors' generalized fears about Johnson Ridge developing did not materialize, and they now call it comfortable-sized development. And ironically, some of those same neighbors who the long opposing neighbors tried to prevent from ever being able to become neighbors are now in opposition to this project as well, despite the consistent size to the lots in Johnson Ridge. The, as I mentioned, the comprehensive plan has changed. In 2008, there was a new comprehensive plan that was approved at that time, and the major change that you see in this proposal is that the comprehensive plan makes the clear statement that large lots on septic are detrimental to the economic health of the county. That is, you know, a very strong point throughout the comprehensive plan and is supported by the code and maps today. The comprehensive plan goes through a number of reasons why this is, and really helps to understand why the prior pattern of development that you see when you look at the lots surrounding this one show two and three-acre lots, and precisely why this lot, this proposal is for smaller lots, because that is exactly what the code and the plan call for. Some of the reasons that are given within the comprehensive plan for the detrimental impact of these two and three-acre lots are the environmental toll, such as water quality and natural resources, the feasibility and cost of extending public services, inhibiting urban growth and redevelopment here where you're just one mile outside of the Kansas City, Missouri limits, stymying economic development with thousands of jobs in the queue of development but minimal housing inventory, and the social conflicts, just like the neighbor conflicts that you've seen in the other proposals on this lot and that you will likely hear today as well. The neighbors on these rural residential lots tend to be more likely to resist the inevitable change that's happening to the area. The impact of the change to the county code and the plan and the resulting change you're seeing in this application cannot be emphasized enough. Another thing that the comprehensive plan drafters understood is that it is key that the decision must be made on the plan and code. They called out in the comprehensive plan that without these predetermined factors to be used to consider, there are adjacent neighbors that will always fear change that could impact them, particularly in these rural and urban fringe areas. The plan and code provides standards to guide decision-making so that public meetings don't get derailed whenever there's outcry over potential change. Now, this proposal is consistent with the code and the plan, staff has confirmed this, and it has been reviewed by a number of different county departments and experts that the county relies on in their subject matters, and found to be in compliance with each of these requirements. The code provides that the rezoning shall be considered consistent with the comprehensive plan if it's consistent with the planning tier map. Now, this is an image, a snapshot of the planning tier map that shows the subject property where the star is located. You can see the salmon area, the salmon-colored area around it, that is the urban services tier, and that is the designation in that map for all of the properties surrounding it. You see the crosshatching to the south because that's the area within one mile of Kansas City, Missouri, and that's the one distinction there. The urban services tier, as we've mentioned, allows up to four lots per acre with municipal services and urban density development near cities, and it provides that such areas should be reserved for urban development irrespective of timeframes. This proposal meets the development standards through paved roads, stormwater using natural streams and ponds, wastewater treatment provided on a municipal-level system, and water provided by a public system. It meets the purpose and intent of the land code, as we've gone through already, it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's been reviewed by many experts in the county and found to be protective of land, air, water, environmental resources, and property values through the regulations that have been enacted to ensure this. Efficiency and service provision and fiscal resources is ensured by development with municipal-level services on lots as proposed by the comprehensive plan, and there'll be a significant increase in taxes paid by an additional nine residences to fund county services in addition to the direct fees for services that are consumed by these households. This is code-compliant development, reviewed and rereviewed for compliance, and development just over a mile outside of Kansas City, Missouri, adjacent to other residential development and not scattered development. It also meets the criteria for rezoning approval and preliminary plat approval, as staff walked through earlier. It meets changing conditions in the area development, consistent with Johnson Ridge to the north and development from the south within a mile of Kansas City, and helps support the economic development of the county through providing more homes. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan and zoning code as it exists today, as noted on prior slides, which requires a more dense development pattern with connection to these municipal-level services. It's compatible with surrounding uses and zoning, those adjacent uses are also single-family homes. Compatible is not the same as identical, but single-family residential is inherently compatible with single-family residential, unlike other uses that, under the zoning that exist today, might be concerning to neighbors that are on these smaller lots, such as a wind turbine up to 80 feet in height that's permitted as of right, or, you know, having pigs, or any number of other uses that could be put on this property today, a telecommunications tower. Many of those uses would not even require any kind of permit for a public hearing for This is an image of the preliminary plat. There's access to the south along 132nd Street, can see Mr. Gurkin's existing property up here in the northwest, or the northeast, sorry, my lawyer directional skills are lacking. And the green represents the 50-foot open space buffer that is proposed around the property, and the potential dry detention that's down there in the south as well. The adjacent lots are compatible, you can see up here, we've got two lots that are proposed that are adjacent to Johnson Ridge that are almost an acre each, and they are adjacent to lots that are roughly 1.17 acres on average up here to the north. The lots that are adjacent to the property to the west are a minimum of .92 acre, almost one acre.
To the west?
To the west, yes, these here to the, or... These here to the, or, did I get it wrong again? No, that's the west here.
Those appear to be larger than point-nine acres.
Oh, the lots that are proposed are point-nine-two acres. The lots that here are proposed are point-nine-two.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
And that is the minimum size that's allowed by the zoning district, so it could not be replatted and shrunk without changing the zoning. There is also an existing tree line. You can see some of it right here that will be supplemented with additional trees in the proposed fifty-foot tree buffer. And on this landscape plan, you can see some of that. You can see the existing trees, and then you can see the proposed trees. It also shows that there are conifers, various pine trees, in addition to the deciduous trees that will help provide screening in different times of the year, and really add to what is already an existing mature tree line that Mr. Gurken's been working on for some time because this is his home, this is his property as well. So he has already begun working on that and will continue to add to that landscape based on this plan. The neighbors' concerns have already been addressed by county's many experts. There was another neighborhood meeting that was held on March thirtieth at Conrad's Restaurant. There were a handful of neighbors in attendance, but we did not see the members that have spoken in opposition to the plan in January at that neighborhood meeting. The neighbors testified to hearings in January to general concerns, density, traffic, stormwater, wastewater, and water, all items that have already been reviewed and addressed by the county's subject matter experts, and they're not ultimately impacts of this specific development. Density, here you can see a picture of Johnson Ridge. It's a typical suburban development when you're driving down the street, and the lot size is really not that much different from Johnson Ridge as staff walked through. There's a fifty-foot green space buffer, as we discussed, that will help separate the lots. And keep in mind that the prior plan, which approved nine lots of three acres, was also opposed by neighbors as being too small. Down here, you can also see an image. This is the existing tree line buffer, probably about four years ago, so you can see what it looked like looking towards the west here at that time. So that's the buffer that exists today that will be added to in that fifty-foot space with additional trees. Traffic, that's an issue that many neighbors are concerned about. Clay County Highway Department has reviewed and found very positive comments about the project with its access point, and did not have enough concerns with traffic to even require a traffic study. The neighbors' concerns are ultimately pre-existing concerns about traffic that will not be exacerbated by adding these homes. The preliminary stormwater mitigation plan has been provided and reviewed, and there will be a final stormwater plan that will be also reviewed by the county. The pond up here on lot nineteen to the north is planned to be utilized for stormwater management and a potential dry detention down to the south. The plan has been reconfigured to avoid the need for a stream reroute that was concerning to staff. You know, working through staff, we've revised that, so that will not need to happen. So, you know, you can see that down here in the south corner of the lot. And there will be additional review and approval of stormwater plans. The grading and erosion control plan is part of that stormwater plan and has been similarly reviewed and will continue to be reviewed by the relevant groups. Wastewater is also an issue that's been brought up a lot. This is a bit of a red herring because there is a municipal-level sewer system that will be used here. It already serves Johnson Ridge, and it will still be under one-half capacity when adding these new homes because it was designed for those one-hundred-and-four homes that, some of which were never built, plus the ability to expand. The Timber Creek Management Group owns and operates the facilities and lines, not the Johnson Ridge HOA, and there will be a connection to lines that are already existing. If you look at the red there, you can see where lines have already been run, and there are easements in place as well, because much like putting in stub streets for future development, that is what the county required for that to be ready to go to allow connection to later development. There are experts that manage and oversee the operation to make sure that the wastewater treatment plan is much safer than septic systems and private backyards. They have layers and layers of oversight through state, federal, and local authorities, lots of reporting, and experience operating this facility for over a decade and over two decades of experience in Missouri. The Water District has reviewed and said that they can serve the development. Neighbors have talked about concerns of water pressure, but these were also raised to attempt to stop Johnson Ridge, and they're not issues that are relevant to this development itself. It's pre-existing concerns that are used when experts have already reviewed it and said there's the capacity to handle this. The Smithville Area Fire Protection District has also said that they can serve the development and provided the number of hydrants which will be provided to assist them in doing There is competent evidence for approval through the compliance with the county code and plan and staff's recommendation of approval, and the neighbors' general concerns are not reasonable grounds for denial. The county's experts have reviewed in some detail and have found that it is consistent. The decision must comply with the county's own code and adopted plan and not based on generalized fears of neighboring property owners. The courts have frequently talked about how making decisions based on desires of a few property owners as opposed to the general public interest of almost two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand residents of the county is not an appropriate reason for denial. Ultimately, there's no development that will satisfy certain neighbors. It would halt all development in the county if we caved to the desires of such a small fraction of landowners on each development. And ultimately, you have to consider that each of these landowners was the change, whether it was a year ago or sixty years ago, and that change will continue to happen. At some point, much denser development will move into this area, and if this lot hasn't, this area hasn't been developed at that time, it may be on this very property. With that, I thank you for your time. We request your approval, and we agree with staff's recommended conditions of approval as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Very thorough, very nice. Does the board members have any questions for Mr. Gurken's representative? All right, thank you. Is there any, anyone in the audience that would like to comment on the application being heard that supports this application? Yes, sir. State your name and address, please, sir.
Name's Rick Luths, address ninety-three-ten North Evanston Avenue, Kansas City. I'm interested in buying a lot. I've looked around. We have a lot shortage in Clay County, and I don't want to move, I'm born and raised in Clay County, lived here my whole life. My other option's Clay County. Don't want to do it. So far, I've seen a lot of facts. I've seen staff approval as opposed to some people that don't want change. I just soon see the lots developed.
All right. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on support?
Charles George, sixty-eight oh nine Northeast one-hundred-and-thirty-four Street. I would like a definite decision on what is this going to do to our water pressure?
We're, we're taking...
Are they onward or on, you know, up with the water?
Sir, this is for proponents and support. If you want to speak against it, there'll be a turn for that, too.
I raised my hand.
You raised your hand in support when he asked if you were in support. If you're not in support, you will have a chance to speak later.
Okay.
I trust you're speaking in support of our case, sir?
Yes, hello, I'm Charles Gurken, seven-three-three-two Northeastern Avenue, Kansas City, Missouri. Hi, this plan is approved. I am interested in living in Eastern Estates. I think there's a definite lack of housing in the area. Lots of folks moving to this area from different parts of the country, so I think it would be a good thing to have approved. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in support? State your name and address.
Good evening, my name's Scott Dillon. Myself, my family reside at twenty-one forty-five Red Oak Lane, right here in Liberty, Missouri. This is the second time I've appeared in this chamber on behalf of Gurken. A lot of people talk about a lot of different things, but one thing is a constant in our life, and that's change. Things change daily, hourly, weekly, but things change. I think this particular project has great interest to me because I live in the Whitehall subdivision, which twenty years ago was almost a, well, was described to me when I bought it as almost a, you know, a country lifestyle. Well, then came the Flintlock flyover, and now I live next to a highway. So I'm interested in something like this because that would get me closer to that idea of my dream. So I'm supportive of this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else comment that would like to show support?
Hi, Robert Leardi, I'm Richard Gurken's son-in-law. We live at seven-twenty-two Northeast Stonemore Road in Lathrop, Missouri. Me and his daughter have actually talked about possibly looking into a lot in this location as well. We see a lot of this up where we're at. We're in rural Clinton County. They're doing some stuff at the end of our road, building some, a new home and maybe an event center and stuff, and I'm all for it. I mean, you know, that's what people buy land for, you know? They own land, they can do whatever they want with it, so I'm not down there arguing with them or getting upset about it, and it just, it is what it is. It's what this country's all about, so.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir?
We have actually numerous speakers here. Ken Bosscher, New York. Hello, my name's Ken Bosscher. I live at eight-two-eight Scott Drive, Liberty, Missouri, and I've been in Clay County all of my sixty-five years. I'm retired, fortunately, but I did a career in real estate. Also, I did sales, did land development, and various things. I actually developed the subdivision, Valleybrook Estates, Valleybrook Acres, just directly south of this project off of Eastern back to the east side. And it was three-acre tracts, they were individual septic systems. That was in the mid-nineties, and it was very well-received. Like I say, it's several things on this that the attorney did a good job covering, so there's no sense going back over them. But just personally, I've known Richard since, like he said, forty-some-odd years since he's been in the business, and he always does a really nice job with whatever he does out there. For some of the neighbors that have concerns, I would think him living on site there and having been there over, what, ten years? About ten years, they kind of have an idea about what kind of neighbor he is and will be. And if anybody had any more reason to keep the neighborhood nice, you would think it would be him in the neighborhood, which still has a lot of the ground there, and he wants to probably live there the rest of his life. So I would appreciate if it meets the criteria, and it sounds like it does, an approval for Richard Gurken's project.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jim Rucker, ninety-five-hundred North Hunter Avenue, Kansas City, Missouri. Several things to visit about, I'll make it short. I follow real estate every day. I know some on this board do as well, and so that's not news to them, but I want to share it with the group. Currently, we have an inventory crisis in Clay County and in Kansas City. Just go out and try to buy a home, or go try to buy a piece of land, and you'll see exactly what I'm talking about. Just a quick story, last week, five-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar house, cash buyer, offered five-seventy, and we lost the transaction to someone else. So that just kind of gives you a feel for the supply issue. Land, land is selling right now in Clay County higher than I've ever, ever seen it, and I've been around this county for a long time. So we definitely have an inventory issue, and it's going to be compounded. It's compounded by the fact that here in the city of Liberty itself, there is eleven million square feet of commercial space that's not just being talked about, action is happening on it. And over the next five years, there's six thousand jobs from that new commercial development. Those people need a place to live. We don't have places in Clay County right now to accommodate that. We need more inventory. Likewise, you heard just last week, at I-435 and one-sixty-nine, there's going to be a new data center going. The people that work in data centers make big money. They've got to have a place to live. Last week, Hunt Midwest announced that they're buying property all around the airport for job creation, for business. Need more places. So we've got a decision to make here in Clay County. The cities in Clay County seem to be getting it because Smithville's growing, Carney's growing, Liberty's growing, and the list goes on. But the county has got to help with this inventory issue. I understand that folks go out into country and buy property and count on living there for a long while, but things do change. And now we've got a decision to make here in this county. Do we want to provide residential development? By the way, this morning, in Kansas City, including Clay County, we have one-half of one month inventory of residential housing that's pre-owned and under construction, one-half of one month. Normal is six months, so that's why we're seeing the experience that I just shared. How to solve that is we've got to approve residential developments such as this one. When I hear the presentation and I hear that the county experts have approved with conditions, and I hear that the developer is willing to meet those conditions, I'm for it. I hope that you all are. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, come on up.
Sorry. Hi, my name is Wayne Leardi at fifty-two fifty-one North Flora Avenue, Kansas City, Missouri, County Clay. This is more of a reference to it. I've known him for over ten years, and he has always done things in a real quality way, and he's an upstanding man and keeps nice, his place is really pristine and really in nice condition. And all I can say is I've seen some of his work, and it's always been up to par, and he's very truthful and a very good man.
All right. Thank you. Yes, ma'am? Did you have your arm up?
Good evening, Kristy Saligo-Fleshman, one-two-eight oh six Timberland Drive in Carney, Missouri. I know that there's a lot of neighbors that are here to oppose this. My husband and I also owned property within fifteen-hundred feet of this development, and we are in favor of the development for the many reasons that have been given this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public like to comment in support?
Hi, Denise DeBour, three-twenty-seven Main Street, Liberty, Missouri. I am Richard's better half. I've seen him, I've seen his projects, I've seen a lot of his work. It is always at or above minimum standards. He never does minimum standards unless it's required by the customer. So I want my voice heard. Again, I am in favor.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else to speak in support?
Hello, my name is Alva Windsor. I live at five-oh-six North Point Avenue here in Liberty, and my husband and I are interested in buying property from Richard's, one of his lots, and we are in favor of having this. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Yes, sir?
Good evening. My name is Spencer Thompson. I'm twelve-oh-seven Campbell Street, Liberty, Missouri, lifelong county resident, and also a real estate and development attorney, and I just wanted to speak in favor of the proposal. I think it's important for this board to heed some of the comments that Mr. Rucker and Mr. Bosscher made about quality development, the need for housing inventory. This is, you know, we're competing with surrounding counties for not just jobs and investment, but also for residents and taxpayers, and we've got to have quality housing for folks. I think we do have a shortage of this type of housing. I'm personally familiar with Richard and his work ethic and his business acumen. I'm personally familiar with Richard and his work ethic and his business acumen and so forth, and can attest to that personally. I think it's, it's, this just doesn't strike me as one of the developments that should have a line drawn in the sand for the "not in my backyard" type of movement. I mean, this is, we're not talking about putting a nuclear power plant in these folks' backyard. We're not talking about, you know, a mobile home park, you know? We're not talking about a high-density. This is residential, and we need this kind of development in the county, and we're seeing it go up in other counties on both sides of the state line, and I think it's important for Clay County to keep pace. And as a lifelong resident, I support this, and I think it's, it's one of those projects that you all should give serious consideration, support.
All right. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Antoinette Cook. I live at 612 Joseph Street in Liberty, Missouri, 64068. And I haven't known Richard as long as the rest of the people here have, but I know we haven't shared the letter from the opposition that came out in the packet, which had the same arguments that they've had all along, that we've addressed here tonight, but there were two paragraphs that attacked his character, and that's what I want to talk about. They called him greedy. And what I have witnessed is a man that employs people and would give the shirt off of his back for any of his employees and has, in fact, helped them find places to live when they have none. So I would just like that to be made part of the record, and I hope that this is approved.
All right. Thank you.
I live at 2120 Jetty here in Liberty, Missouri, and I just, I'm very interested in the development and am looking forward to see what happens in the future.
All right. Thank you. Yes, ma'am, right where you want to comment? Yep. Come on up.
Hi, my name's Lara DeVorik. I live at 319 Lakeland Drive in Smithville, Missouri. I graduated from Smithville. I've lived there for years. Me and my husband, we have three children. They go to Smithville schools, two of them do. The youngest one's not, not old enough yet. But we, we have been a part of the Smithville community for, for years, and I needless to say, I love it. That's why I'm still here. We have been working very hard in the past years to get our credit where it needs to be, to save up money, and we're ready to buy. We've been ready to buy, but there's nothing to buy. There is, there is nothing with enough space, with enough bedrooms where we want it in Smithville school districts. And even if there is one, it's gone before we can check it out, make an offer, anything. We've, we've been looking for something, and it's not, it's just in the, in the whole city. There's a shortage of houses that are available for families to buy. When I graduated in 2006, our population was 3,500, and I was looking at it, the census says that in, in 2019, it was almost 10,000. So it's tripled in 15 years, and it's going to continue to grow because it's a great community. And when it comes right down to it, if there's nothing for us to buy, we're going to have to move out of Smithville, and that just breaks my heart that my kids won't get that opportunity because there is nowhere for us to move. Smithville won't get to continue to grow, and it's, it's such a wonderful community that I hate to see it stifled that way. What Richard has proposed meets all the qualifications. He's made the proposals as he's asked. It's a great, it's a great plan, and I'd like to see it passed.
All right.
Thank you.
Yep. If anyone has something new to add that supports?
Yes, it'd be short. My name is John Babich, and I used to live in the Woodland subdivision, and I moved to San Rosa Beach, Florida. I hold two licenses, electrical in Florida and state electrical license in Missouri, and I do work for Richard, and I would like to come back to Missouri to live, so if you approve that I could buy one of those lots.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. If anyone else that supports the applicant that has something new to add, you're welcome to step up. All right, very well. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the application, you're welcome to step up to the podium.
Yes, I would. Okay?
State your name and address, please, ma'am.
My name is Mary Stevenson. I currently live at 800 Chesterton Court in Liberty, but I own property right across the road from this parcel of land you're talking about. Okay? And I want to thank you. I don't think I need to spend too much time introducing myself, since it was only a few weeks ago that I appeared before you concerning the first version of the plans for the development of Eastern Estates. But my name is Mary Stevenson. I am the owner of the property at 13315 Northeastern Road, just east across the road from the tract in question. My son, Paul M. Stevenson, and his wife, Lisa, currently reside on this property and take care of it for me. The concerns I shared with you at that time, and which perhaps had some influence on your decision to deny the plan, are no less concerning today because there is little change between the proposal you considered at the end of January and the plan before you tonight. So I will limit my comments to three questions highlighted in the report prepared and submitted by the county staff for your review. First, and I'm quoting from the staff report, "Whether or not proposed zoning district allows development compatible with existing uses and zoning of nearby property," end of quote. Whether you look north, south, east, or west, for miles around, you will find no examples of land use for small-size urban-type lots as envisioned on these 18 lots at Eastern Estates. Rather, you will find large lots, mostly two-and-a-half to five acres and more, as well as larger agriculture acreages in predominantly rural settings. So the answer is no. Nothing about the density of this planning zone is compatible with the open rural character of the surrounding area. The differences in terms of livability, safety, and environmental concerns are significant. Second, again, I'm quoting from your report, "Whether or not the county and other service providers will be able to provide adequate facilities and services to the subject property while maintaining adequate services levels of existing development." The existing infrastructure, primary roads, is of a concern. Eastern Road, 132nd Street, Highway 291 are not adequate to allow prompt and safe services for urban-type development. 132nd Street is not hard surface. Eastern is narrow without curbs or shoulders, subject to heavy traffic that often disregards the safe speeds. The eastern intersection with 291 is dangerous, even before the added urban residential and business activity now end the development there. And the intersection on north at Highway 92 is even worse. Adequate response times by police and fire responders? A house in the near, nearby neighborhood burned to the ground recently before firefighters could arrive. One wonders if present road conditions and enough staffing for service providers will be available to provide necessary service, safety, given for the additional 18 residents in a combined urban-type area. Third, and I'm still quoting, whether or not the proposed amendment would result in significant adverse impact on other property in the vicinity of the subject tract or on the environment. The addition of the roofs on 18 houses, paved streets, driveways, sidewalks, have the potential for creating erosion and runoff flooding on nearby properties. Maintenance issues of the sewage system, the retention areas are prone to neglect, creating future headaches. Additionally, there seems to be little attention given in this plan to the inclusion of open space in the development. The set aside on an undeveloped and long-neglected wasteland at the southeast corner of the development seems inadequate. In our view, yes. This amendment will adversely affect the environment, including air, water, noise, storm, and sewage management, and other natural resources. So once again, we urge denial of this rezoning and preliminary plan. It shows little regard either for the comprehensive plan or for the Clay County Land Development Code. Thank you for listening.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Lisa Stevenson. I live on the property that Ms. Stevenson owns. It's 13315 Northeastern Avenue. And I hear everybody talking about how against we are just building houses. We're not against it. We just want it appropriate for the area. That's all we're asking. If he wants to build houses, fine. He doesn't have to build 18. He can build less and fit in with everything around there. And now I'm going to read my speech. Well, here we are again, basically saying pretty much the same as before, and really not much has changed with the new housing plan, except for taking off three houses, leaving the corner lot open somewhat. I went to Carriage Hill and other neighbors on Northeastern, and we spoke on why we are all against development, the traffic, fire services, police services. Also, a lot of, of the couples I spoke with said they bought houses out there because of the rule setting for their families, and have concerns on what will do to the environment, water, stormwater, and all the other natural resources we have now. This is not comparable with the area. This is just too much right now. We would like to see three-to-five-acre lots in this area, and that's all that everybody there in Carriage Hill Northeastern is asking. Make them bigger. Make them five, three-to-five-acre lots, and stick with what we have coded now. It's going to come. I agree. It is going to come, but it doesn't have to be right now. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition of the case before us?
My name is Claude Miller. I'm here with my wife Cynthia and my father-in-law and mother-in-law. We live at 13023 Northeastern Avenue, Kansas City, Missouri. A lot of people spoke about the builder, and I understand he's a wonderful guy. I agree with that. I'm not going to get into the fact of what I've done in my life, but if he builds 20 houses, or 19, at $750,000 apiece, you find somebody that's going to buy a house for $750,000, the way the economy is and that. I'm 100% disapparent. I am retired from the military. I draw a pension and a good paycheck because I earned it. I'm dying from age and orange, but I couldn't afford a $750,000 house if you gave it to me. I mean, I'm just speaking the truth. Now, if you pull the lot up where I live across the street, a gentleman bought three lots, a house and two lots. You guys voted, or they did, because one of the, two of the lots were three acres and one of them was 2.8, so he couldn't build on it. He had to go before the board and get approval to build another house there, which they did. That was this summer. I'm sure them people aren't going to be happy when they find out that you can build 19 houses on the same-sized property. But that's just my own opinion. As far as the traffic goes, I contacted Clay County Highway Department, Transportation. They told me that before Johnson Ridge was built, at WHB Road in 92, which is turns into Northeastern after the jog, there were 764 cars in a 24-hour period. Now, if you build that, you might as well double it. And I intend to die of old age, not of a traffic accident out on Northeastern. Now, I know it's everybody that got up here and spoke up for it. That's great, but I didn't hear that many people that live in the area. They all live somewhere else. That's great. I understand that, but I live there. I came to the country, and I intend to live and die in the country. If you want to move to the city, move to the city. And that's basically about all I got. I thank you for listening.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Gentlemen, the gray sweatshirt, come on up. If you have something new to add.
Yes.
Yes?
I do. I'm Bronco Veslic, 712 Northeast Center, 34th Street. I'm president of the Johnson Ridge HOA. So previously, we had a number of different things that we wanted to address. Given this new plan, there are still two issues that I'd like to bring up, no, three, I'm sorry, three issues. One, still the water pressure. I, I understand that they, the Water Sewer District is saying that there's adequate water. I can, can continue to say absolutely not the case, right? We constantly suffer with water pressure issues in all the houses around the area. The second issue is around the, the direction that the road hits. So our neighbor across the street, he can't be here, he actually just sold the house that backs right up to the, the new subdivision. The way that the road is designed, that, all the streetlights or car lights at night will shine directly into that house. And so while I, you know, I can't speak directly for myself, I can tell you that is that going to adversely affect that particular home unless the buffer area and the, the trees and plants that he's going to put in block all the lighting coming through. Otherwise, that house is going to constantly have lights for all the homes, drivers coming up that road. And then the last thing was just in terms of, like, potential covenants and, and all that. While I applaud everyone stating that Mr. Gurkin's house is immaculate, I can tell you that the way that he keeps his lot today would not pass our covenants for Johnson Ridge. And we just want to ensure that the covenants that he puts in place would match some of the same covenants to ensure the same type of look, feel, property use, and, and some of those types of things. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone else have something new to add to opposition?
My name is Jay Bruce Lowery, and I live on 13117 Northeast, Eastern. And I can stand in my front yard and see his house. 10 years ago, he could have built 12 houses. Today, he wants to build six more. If that's not stupid, I don't understand it. But through all this, and these people probably all in business, and I don't understand common sense why he don't just build a house on three acres like all the rest does. It's just simple common sense. Now, I changed the zoning law, and then if you do this and change the zoning law where the X is, not a couple more years or three, across 30 seconds, they're going to build 20 more houses if you change the zoning law. So I'm strictly opposed to it. I could say a lot more about it. I don't want to take up your time, but that's really important. He could have built 12 houses now. Why does he want to build six more? It don't make any sense to change the zoning law for him to build six more houses. And also, he, we went through this 10 years ago, and I don't understand. It doesn't make any sense. He was, he didn't build his house then, so he built a house. He was, he didn't build his house then, so he built a house. He was temporarily going to build a street, a road to Eastern, out to Eastern. That's been temporary. He's going to bring his road down to 136. That was temporary, where he built his house. Now, it's permanent. So, as far as, I don't know the man. He's got to drive my house, by my house every day. I don't know him. He never stops at my house. I don't understand what he's trying to do for six more houses. It's ridiculous. I could say a lot more, but I've got the point. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there one else? Yes, sir.
My name's Don Zeller. I live at 8209 Northeast 132nd Street. I know Mr. Gurken. I've had him in my home to give me the estimates on remodeling my home. I have no qualms with the work he does. But, all your friends that he brought out here, you know, one speaks of how impeccable his house is. You guys wouldn't stand for what we have to see every day. When I get to the corner and I look at his house, I see four trailers, a shed, I see a tractor parked at the end of his driveway, day in and day out. How many of you people would allow that in your housing area? None, right? Yet, we have to look at it day in and day out, for years, okay? Where I live across the street is a piece of property that's owned by an LLC. I am concerned that if you approve this, that LLC will come back and go, uh, we want to build the same thing. If you've driven down 132nd Street, 132nd Street is patches on top of patches on top of patches. The county doesn't even have the money to fix our road, okay? We don't have to worry about cops worried with speed on our road. You can't drive down our road fast enough without tearing up your car, okay? As far as the inerrations by the attorney here, that we were all here and opposed Johnson Ridge and opposed his three acres. I was here, I was not opposed to his three acres. I was not opposed to Johnson Ridge because it gives enough green space. Yes, the lots are smaller, but there's enough green space, it opens the area up. I question his, how he's doing this, because when you look at some of his plots, he has a buffer zone with trees around the new lots and nothing on his. Then, you see another one that has trees added around his property. I have a feeling that his property is going to stay, and the green space will be just added to the lots, and should not be included when you calculate this. I spoke about the safety hazards, the water pressure, and on that water district at my place. It's lousy. I can't turn two sprinklers on at once. But we went through that three weeks ago, four weeks ago, whatever it was. I won't bore you with that again.
All right.
I don't see that much of a change. Thank you for your time.
Yep. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Yes, ma'am?
Marina Pace, 7817 Northeast 132nd Street. And, you know, we've addressed all the concerns and everything, but I keep hearing everybody say that they want to move into this place and buy these very expensive houses that he's planning on building. Well, if you look at Johnson Ridge, you can move your map up just a little bit, and right across the street from Johnson Ridge is one of those very expensive houses that this lady can go buy and move her family into, that's been on market for at least three months. So, who's buying these very expensive houses? Because that house is beautiful. I would love to go buy that house and move into it. But nobody's buying it, because who's buying these super expensive houses? So, but I'm opposed to it. I'm down the street from it, and as Mr. Zeller said, 132nd Street is in horrible condition. The fire department issue is still out there. You know, you can put all the fire hydrants you want out there, but if you don't have a fire truck to pump them, it doesn't do you any good. And, you know, what Mr. Miller was talking about is entirely true. We're not opposed to the housing addition. We're opposed to the, them being stacked on top of each other, and the addition of everything that's going out there. And now that we just have found out, you know, nothing has been addressed to the issues of fixing 291, and now we just find out that they're putting a QuickTrip right there next to the fire station. How are we ever going to get out of Eastern with a QuickTrip right there? Please tell me, how are we going to live out here?
Not our discussion this evening.
I know, that's not our discussion, but how are we going to live out here?
There is a, there is a signal that's required at that intersection.
There's a what? I'm sorry.
Signal, traffic signal, that is required at that intersection.
But that's, that'll be on Sherman, not Eastern.
It's on Eastern.
Yeah, because QuickTrip is going to be on Sherman, which is just the next block down. But still, it's going to affect us drastically. Thank you, guys, for listening to us, and...
Anyone else that would like to speak that has something new to say in opposition?
I have a lot of new things to say. My name's April McQuillan. My address is 8614 Northeast 132nd Street, Liberty, Missouri, just up the street across Eastern. I'm very new here. We just moved into our property in June, and it was very hard to find a house and a property and to live out, outside of town. We have five children. We were looking for a safe street where my kids can walk down the street without me being scared to death that they're going to get run over. That intersection of Eastern and 132nd, already, I fear for my kids driving on that. I can't imagine more traffic. One of the things we moved out into the country for was the quiet, then, you know, being able to watch the stars at night and not have streetlights everywhere. My fear with this, where does it stop? Why are we rezoning this, and what, where is that going to stop? Is, when is the cow pasture behind my house, where my kids are out playing all day, going to be rezoned? So, I just, I'm worried about the precedent that this is setting. I've never met Mr. Gurken. I'm sure you are a wonderful man. Hopefully, one day, we will meet outside of this room. But those are my concerns amongst many others. So, I just wanted to voice that in opposition.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, hi. I'm Paul McQuillan. That was my better, truly better half. Yeah, we're new in the area, 8614 Northeast 132nd Street as well. We're truly new in the area, and I really wouldn't be opposed to three to five acre lots on the property. And I'm sure Mr. Gurken is a great guy, and his family and friends as well. You know, I think three to five acres, what I've looked into actually developing some areas around the property where I live, seems to be the standard. And frankly, the infrastructure seems to be able to uphold that. I'm actually a family practice doctor over in Smithville, and when it snows, I do telehealth, because I can't get down the road. I mean, honestly. And maybe I'm a terrible driver, but when I, when I actually head north off 132nd onto Eastern, like, I've literally put my back tire in the ditch, because the road's so narrow several times. And so, I, I think urban sprawl is definitely, it's going to happen eventually. But if we could just do it at such a pace that the infrastructure could keep up with that, three to five acre lots seem very reasonable, along with an improvement in infrastructure. I'm afraid if we start setting the precedent for sub-one acre lots, that cow pasture's not going to be a cow pasture. And while I don't like that, three to five acre lots back there, that would be more reasonable, as long as the infrastructure keeps up with that. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. If anyone has something new to add, you're welcome to speak.
I'll speak.
Yes, sir.
I'm here. My name's Richard E. Decker, and I live at 6819 Northeast 134th, Smithville, Missouri. And I, where they are proposing to put all these houses in, they, to me, looks like they're going to put a cul-de-sac right there in my backyard. I don't want that in my backyard. I don't want people out there in the back. I didn't buy that property to have people looking at me. And basically, like, like I said, the other thing is, is the water pressure out there. Now, you, they could tell you all you want about it, but that water pressure is at 55 PSI sometimes. Sometimes it's at 35. That's when the sprinklers are going, and people are home after work. Now, you're putting in another division behind there, and they're going to tap into that main line. What's that going to do to our water pressure? What do you think? Wow, yeah. But, you know, taking a shower at 30 PSI, it's tough. So, I'm against it, him putting anything back there. And there's one thing off the record, is that I want to say to Richard, if he keeps shooting out there in the backyard with them guns, I'm going to call the authorities. I'm not scared.
All right. I think we're getting a little off topic here.
Yeah, I know it. But he, the last night, he made, he made a point. Uh-huh. Everybody knows it, too.
All right. Thank you, sir.
That's all I got.
All right. If anyone else has something new to add, but we're kind of beating a dead horse here, so...
I'm Charles Sackett. I'm a veterinarian. I have lived in Clay County for, since 1958. I am still practicing, and I'm 89 years old. I noticed when you mentioned people to stand up with nothing new, or if they had something new to say, you didn't say that to the people in favor that I picked up on, because they were, they were, they were mostly people living away that was his friend. I understand that.
I am not friends with Mr. Gurken, then.
Anyway, I, I served on the Clay County Board of Health, and I also served on the North Kansas City School Board for Education for nine years. But Clay County has a jewel out in the area north where I live. I live next to Don Zeller at 8401 Northeast 132nd Street. I have the brown house with the red roof. It's pretty hard to miss on the south side. And I just would want you to think, if you approve something with this high a density of homes on a small area, then you're going to be stuck with approving other, larger plots, plots of land with high density. And pretty soon, you're going to have an area out north like Gracemore, this in the south part of Clay County. You're going to have houses stacked on top of houses, and that's not what you want. It's not what the neighbors out in the area want, and it's, it's so important that we keep the, the area that's vacant right now into quality homes. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
And Chairman, may I?
Yes, sir.
Just quickly, so, you're not going to defend yourself. I'll defend you. That was mentioned to both, both sides, and I believe both sides have been treated fairly.
All right. Thank you, Kim. Is there anyone else that would have anything new to add?
Yes, my name's Louis Jones. I live on Johnson Ridge, built a new home there about ten years ago. And I know Mike Johnson designed, that this was all designed, when he built Johnson Ridge, to service the water and the sewer for this, for maybe forty homes. But I think everybody will contest this, our water pressure in the summertime when everybody's running sprinklers, it is weak, very weak. I think most people, and we've, a lot of us have talked to the water district about that, and I just, I'm afraid we'll be shorter of water if we get another, you know, eighteen homes or twenty on this deal. But anyway, the traffic, it's, everybody knows it's bad, but that can be fixed. Of course, the water can too, but I'd like to make sure that the water deal is guaranteed, that it'll be, you know, better or still have plenty of water for what we...
I think the water pressure, I think Mr. Decker spoke, we're not related, anyway, but he said water pressure's 55, 30, fluctuates summertime, time of day.
Yep.
You know, the, the Missouri Department of Natural Resources, the minimum domestic household pressure has to be 20 PSI. So, the district is still in full compliance with DNR minimum standards, and if you got beef with the water pressure, you need to take it up with the water district and not plan and zoning.
Probably, maybe Johnson didn't contend when they built that, and they put the water dis, sprinklers, I don't know how many, there's no...
I think if enough, if enough of, an organized group that's very business and very polite, like all of you have been, if all of you went to a Clay Nine board meeting, you'd get their attention.
Okay. I hope so. That's my main concern is the water and sewer.
Yep.
Of course, sewer's fine. I mean, when it don't work, you know it pretty quick. But anyway, the water, you know, weak, and that's my biggest concern.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Sir, just one, one quick...
If you want, step up to the podium, please.
One quick question on that water pressure. What does that do for the safety when a fire truck hooks up to a hydrant that has 20 PSI? Okay? And again, this, this is the experts that we speak about, that she speaks about, and we know what makes an expert.
A fire hydrant that has 20 PSI is not a fire hydrant. It's going to become a flush hydrant. The, we're not here tonight to talk about the water, the water woes of Clay Nine and Johnson Ridge. We're here tonight to talk about Eastern and Burton Estates.
Right. And we're, we're putting fire hydrants in there. What are they connecting to? The same water lines that we're talking about. So, there's a safety issue with houses that close and no pressure at a hydrant, okay? We know what a specialist or a professional expertise is, it's, it's, it's a piece of paper.
Yep.
Okay?
All right.
So, thank you.
Yep. If there, I think we've heard enough, if, if you're, you can have about 60 seconds, and we're about done with opposition.
60 seconds. Just related to the fire hydrants, we lived in Iowa prior to moving here, had a huge outbuilding that caught fire. We lived in an area just like we do now with no fire hydrants. Six fire trucks there ran out of water. The whole thing burned to the ground because we didn't have water pressure and the trucks were not enough. All I wanted to say about that. Thank you.
Can you speak your name and address again, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. April McQuillan, 8614 Northeast 132nd Street.
Yep. Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Oh, I hope you're not going to read all that to us.
Oh, I will just read the top five. So, my name is Vlad DaCosta. I live on 6818 Northeast 132nd Street. I am the immediate neighbor to the applicant's lot on the west side. Oh, and right here, I am representing 131 signatures of twenty-plus pages of people opposing the development.
You spoke just a few minutes ago, didn't you?
No, I spoke three months ago in January.
My bad.
But it's just that my face is familiar, because I'm the greatest opponent. All right, so, my story is, I came from Iowa looking for a countryside lifestyle so I could share with my kids the beauty of living in the countryside, and I was burning away from the life in a, in a city. And I was looking for a place that I could retire and pass down to my children, they could live there as well, enjoying the beauty of the countryside. So, not to board the commission, the advisory board, I have a letter from my daughter, which she was here three months ago. You may remember her. I brought my two little lawyers-to-be. Right, you may remember my two girls when they were reading their, reading their petition letter. So, that's, those are her words. She's nine-year-old. Hello, everyone. This is my talk against rezoning. The reasons I am against rezoning are about, I would miss the privacy, my daily jogs with my papa, which is me. It's very pleasant. I would miss the beautiful views of nature and, and share with my family. And if the houses are built, it will affect the natural habitats of many types of animals we see around here. Thank you sincerely, Amelia DaCosta. Okay. So, and now are my points here that were not mentioned previously. The, the, nothing against Mr. Richard. He's my neighbor. Do not know him well. I moved in last year, so, summer last year. But one thing is important to, to mention, that the previous application in, back in January, his lots were... his lots were average of point seven acres, right? It's slightly bigger than a suburban lot. And now it's point nine, he just went up one bracket. Am I going to be back here again with another bracket if this thing fails? So, three months from now. So, there are not, there are just not a lot of changes from the plat previous three months ago, the plat now. And so, I understand the houses will be very expensive and the lots are point nine. So imagine an oversized house, imagine a muffin, right? Oversized house over a small lot. So those are called McMansions. So we will see McMansions all over there. And that, that overpriced house would not value my property, right? It would just increase my taxes, would not value my property. Imagine when I came to, to the countryside looking for a home, I was looking for a country environment, right? So when I saw Johnson Ridge, when I was looking for the house and I saw Johnson Ridge, I thought, well, that's a bad stuff, I'll have all those houses right there. However, Mr. Kip, if you could highlight my lot. However, the houses in the north, my, it's, my, my lot is a rectangle. The house, the, the, the short edge of my property right there faces Johnson Ridge. And I thought, well, if I put a tree line right there, I will block those few houses right there. But now, the applicant wants to put nineteen houses right next to my longest side. So my house is right there in the middle of that narrow, narrow range. So imagine I would be facing nineteen backyards. So the suburban lifestyle that I was just running from is just trying to catch me. And I would like to oppose this development and I appreciate and, and thank you for your time, so, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And by the way, I'm representing all those signatures right there, we are law-abiding citizens, right? We just want to live in a country lifestyle that we paid it for. If the, if the, all those people interested in buying new homes drive south on, on, on Eastern, they will see there's a lot of development coming up there. Thank you.
Yep. Is that it? On the, would anyone else in the audience like to comment opposition to the case being heard? Thank you for that. Mr. Gurkin, would you or your representative like to rebuttal any of the comments?
I think we both would, Jim Bowers, please.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. My name is Jim Bowers, I'm an attorney with the Rasch Fretz White Ghost Law Firm, here today on behalf of Gurkin Properties LLC and Mr. Gurkin. I recognize in a case like this, there's a lot of passion on both sides. I respect that, I respect the opponents. But it's important to understand and realize that this case should not be decided on passion, but should be decided based upon the comprehensive plan in the Land Development Code in Clay County. And I think both the staff, Mr. Jones, Ms. Vancrem, went through both the comprehensive plan, the Land Development Code, step by step, and identify each of the criteria, there are five criteria to be considered by not only this commission, but by the County Commission when your recommendation is given to them. Those five criteria are what you need to look at in determining whether or not to recommend approval or disapproval. And in both instances, Mr. Jones and Ms. Vancrem went through those criteria step by step and demonstrated there is substantial and competent evidence to support the recommendation that we're asking you to make. With respect to some of the specific comments that were made by the opponents, I'd like to try to address some of them. Mayor Stevenson, when she started, was very passionate about her concerns, and she identified three of the five criteria and took the position that the application does not meet any of those three criteria, even though your professional staff and Ms. Vancrem very detailly identified why those criteria are met. But she said it's not compatible with existing uses and that there are no uses anywhere remotely nearby that are similar. Anyone who's looking at the map would look at Johnson Ridge and recognize there is a compatible residential development immediately adjacent to this property. She complained about the service providers not being able to provide services for the additional eighteen lots that would be developed as part of this subdivision and rezoning, when in fact, all of the service providers were contacted and provided written assurances that they could provide services. So she missed the boat on that point as well. And finally, she said there is significant adverse impacts that this project will impose on the immediate adjacent properties. The adjacent impacts that she, or excuse me, the substantial impacts that she identified were flooding and erosion. Well, of course, we provided erosion control plan that provides adequate stormwater management for this project. She mentioned the sewer system, we are connecting to the existing sewer system. She complained about the lack of open space, we provided open space in accordance with the code. So that, those are subjective judgments that were made by our lead opponent that are undercut by the evidence that's before you. None of those complaints, view, in my view, are adequate to support a recommendation for denial in this case. There were other objections raised, including the water, adequate water pressure, which the Chairman, I think adequately addressed from the, from the chair. There was also a complaint about the automobile lights from lots in the proposed subdivision shining into Johnson Ridge to the north when there is a substantial change in elevation. Johnson Ridge is much higher than our property. So that, I believe, is a physical impossibility. Our neighbor immediately to the west complained about the vegeta-, the lack of privacy, I guess you'd say, having, he said eighteen lots adjacent to him, in fact, there will be six or seven lots immediately adjacent to his property line. When we have submitted to you a substantial landscaping plan that will more than adequately buffer our proposed lots from his lot. So, I don't want to get into a point-by-point rebuttal because I don't think it's necessary. I think the evidence is very clear, it's very obvious that there is substantial and competent evidence to support this application. And we would urge you to recommend approval to the County Commission. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Staff, have any questions for Mr. Bowers? Chris, you got anything? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Gurkin, did you want to rebuttal?
I just wanna bring up that I appreciate everybody's input, I respect my neighbors. All my neighbors have been invited to my neighborhood parties, as you will again this year, this summer. If you oppose me or you, or support me, you're still my neighbor. And I've been polite, friendly, and respectful to everyone through this process, and I appreciate that consideration, same consideration when you're voting on the approval of the project. So, without going into any further detail, I, I thank you very much and I ask you to vote in favor of this preliminary plat approval.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gurkin. Well, I think Mr. Bowers had a good point, there's a, you know, this is a voluntary position for all of us and it can become passionate. We empathize with the opposition and we empathize with the support. When we met three months ago, we, we felt that in RU twenty-five, the lots were a little bit small for the proximity. I'm glad to see you came back to the table with increasing the size of your lots and closer to paralleling the, the lot sizes of Johnson Ridge. You know, if Mr. Gurkin's gonna have a homeowners association, maybe some of the neighbors that don't like his, he, he might, he's gonna, he's gonna be under his own HOA. So, if you don't like his tractors or his trailers, he's gonna get rid of them himself, you know? So, uh, does the board have any comments for Mr. Gurkins or his representatives? Or any questions for staff?
Well, I made a few notes, Tom, and only.
May I?
Just a moment, please, we'll hear what Ms. Higgins has.
Well, we close the floor, if we, because this is more for you guys, so if you wanna close the floor, then I can take a discussion with us.
All right, well, let's, let's, let's finish with the public and then we'll close the public participation. If you want to speak, sir, go ahead.
Yes.
As long as this is something new.
Well, yes, it is something new, it's kind of, I, I do, I've done a little maintenance out there and I've noticed, you know, he keeps his lawn maintained very well. The tractor that he's talking about near the road is parked nicely, you know, there's no trash. The bottles and cans that are along his fence line and the road, I mow sometimes there. I pick up trash along that side of the road, so, yes, his place is neat, in my opinion, so.
And what was your name, sir?
My name is Wayne Liardi, fifty-two fifty-one North Flora Avenue, Kansas City, Missouri.
Thank you.
Yep.
And Chairman, may I add? Where, this really isn't about the condition of his property at this point. We checked for code violations, didn't see any code violations. So really, the condition of his property at this point doesn't matter.
All right, we're gonna close the floor, Mr. Higgins, if you have something to add.
Well, I just had, I made a few notes as the night went on and, you know, Kip asked me to, you know, maybe speak because I don't think we, we spoke a lot last time we reviewed this case. So I just made a few quick notes and I wanna just highlight some of them real quick in our discussion. And I'm gonna address a couple of the people that spoke today. So first of all, like Tom said, you know, we are just an advisory board. So, you know, I would hi- highly recommend that you all attend the Commissioners' Meeting as well. They need to hear your, both sides as well. I mean, we're gonna make a decision tonight on what we advise it, ours, it's just in our advice. They don't, they can overrule us or they can vote with us, so. We're, sometimes we're in a tough position because I see both sides of this case. You know, I've not, I don't know Mr. Gurkin. Obviously, he's well-liked, he's got a good crowd of people here and I have heard good things about him. You know, Mr. Rucker and I have done business, Christie Saligo and I have done business together, you know? And so I, I strongly see what they're saying, and they're right. I mean, Mr. Rucker made very adamant points today that we are in such a shortage of building lots, housing. I mean, I've never seen anything like it neither. I mean, if anybody's tried to buy a house in the last year, you know what we're talking about. Another point that I would like to make is that Mr. Decker is quite sufficient in water hydraulics. If any of you don't know who he is or what he does, that's his profession. So when he talks about water, he's very adequate. Terry is on our Highway Department here. I'm sure if there was any concerns with the Highway Department, Terry would have made recommendations for that as well. You know, I don't look at, I don't care about the affordability of the house if they're building million-dollar houses, so be it, you know, good for them. And we don't look at that kind of stuff on this Advisory Board. I mean, you know, people come in every month and they, they explain stuff like that. You know, and it's, it's just, you know, it has nothing to do with our, our decisions. A couple of things that I, that I did notice that, you know, I know Kip tries to sell this thing off as it's just like Johnson Ridge, but there's no green space. I wouldn't have voted for Johnson Ridge probably at the time that it was brought through. I think our low-density tiers are, you know, five acres, our community, our, our countryside's, I feel for, like a gentleman that has the lot, the ten acre lot next to the division, he's gonna have seven new houses along his borderline there. That's one thing that would concern me as a, I am a county resident, I live in the county, you know? And I am a real estate broker and I'm also a developer, I'm pro-development. But I've built a lot of, a lot of rural developments that meet the county criteria codes of five acres and more for the larger estate lot developments. And I like the way that I have a huge clientele base that wants that stuff too. So, I like, I mean, I think his development plan is a good plan if it, if it joined along Smithville or Liberty or Carney or Excelsor, you know, it's a button up that you're doing a high-density, you're kinda making that break transition into the larger lots from the city. And me personally, that's what I would like to see there and not out in the middle of, of nowhere. You know, and the Land Development Code also talks about, you know, I mean, we're real big into outs, you know? And, and our concern is, you know, a five-acre lot has to have an out on it, the land preservation, so you just can't build buildings everywhere. And for me, I mean, by allowing something like this, does that allow us to? We're just throwing the outs out the window. That's my thought, I mean, you guys may have a totally different idea on that. I like the layout, I think I would be more comfortable with it if there was only two lots along that west boundary line. Doesn't make sense as a developer though to plant out, to put in roads and sewers. And Marvin does that, he's a developer as well. So, it's a fine line, it's a toss-up, I mean, how do you go on something like this?
It's a tough decision for all of us up here, without a doubt. Wanted on the record, I wasn't here at the last meeting, so, so this is all new to me tonight. A lot of good comments from both sides, you know, a tough thing for me especially is that I know a lot of people on both sides of this argument tonight. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna disappoint some people no matter what I choose. But, you know, like Chris Dunson Development myself, I mean affordability on development at this point, I mean, you, you're pretty much, and, you know, if I were developing this piece of land and I owned it, I'd do the exact same thing. I mean, I'd come to this committee and I'd ask for almost the exact same thing. Would I prefer a little larger lot? Absolutely. You know, I just, I had a subdivision that was approved in this committee that was three hundred and some odd, forty-six lots or something like that across the street from where I live. And I live on larger lots, a larger lot. It's tough, this, this is gonna be a tough decision, you know, but, you know, and I, I wrote down quite a few comments. I mean, obviously, the biggest one, you know, that we have absolutely nothing to do about is the water pressure. You know, I wish, I wish we could help, but, you know, I'm clueless when it comes to, you know, how, how we can increase water pressure in that area. And as Tom said earlier, that, you know, maybe if you went to one of the meetings, that maybe something can be done. I do have a couple of questions regarding the sewer system and I believe a couple of gentlemen that are here tonight are with Timber Creek. And I, I'm assuming, you know, the new sewer that's coming in here, you're gonna tap into your existing line.
We've closed the, closed the floor.
Oh, okay, all right.
Sorry, gentlemen. Sorry, Marvin.
It's all right. You know, then I'll just, you know, don't answer, but you know.
You can bring up the question and it can be brought up at the Commissioners' Meeting.
Yeah, you know, is this, is this gonna be, you know, gravity-fed? There're gonna be lift stations, who's gonna be responsible for taking care of that? Is it the HOA dependent upon, you know, the expense into that replacing lift stations, you know, over, basically, you have to, you replace those about every ten years? You know, where's that gonna come from? Does it actually come from the, the monthly payment? Now, don't, don't have to answer that, but that's something that, you know, that needs to be answered, I think, at the next level.
And I can probably shed a little bit of light. Now, I don't know about gravity or, 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 you know, how we're pumping it. The, Timber Creek's responsible for the maintenance, is my understanding. Now, keep in mind, this is a rezoning preliminary. So if this is approved by the County Commission, then that's when we would have construction plans, that's when we get into the details and we will have all of that detailed information as part of the final plat, which will come back in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission and County Commission. And those, typically, those details are handled at that final plat meeting. This is more of, does this density, this overall project, make sense for this area? And then we get, dig into the details at that next meeting.
Okay. You know, and I, I'd taken some notes with, you know, people were talking about the adverse impact on some of the properties with stormwater, there is a stormwater. There is a stormwater plan. It's got to be approved. Is it compatible? And there was a statement made earlier, you know, compatible's not the exact same as, as identical. You know, the lots that are backing up to some of the lots in Johnson Ridge, those are 1.23, 1.24, something like that. The other ones are .98, 95, somewhere like that, you know, in my opinion, that's not, it's not a big difference.
I would agree with those ones.
And, you know...
You know, as again, and, you know, looking at it, it's like, I know nobody wants to sit in my backyard, but, I mean, this isn't in just your backyard, this is in the middle of the county. I love the plan. I wished it was boring, something that was, was more conducive for the smaller lots. I think if, you know, I mean, it's, and again, everybody's got a different opinion, so somebody's got something else to say, say it, but I, I think that, you know, the smaller, it's almost the same as Johnson Ridge, it's a nice green space. If you look at Johnson Ridge, again, and I wouldn't have voted for it back then, I wasn't on the board back then, but it's surrounded with tons of green spaces, buffer space, you know, and maybe not so much right along there. There is a strip that goes along that south border, but there is a lot there. So, acres per, per house, you know, lot size owned is about the same, and so...
I agree, and I think you need to agree that there's, that's not affordable these days. You can't do it that way.
No, you can't.
You can't have that much green space.
I think if Johnson Ridge is, if Timber Creek Sewer Station wasn't so readily available there, this wouldn't even be a question.
Right, I agree.
It would not even be a question. So, if you, you know, that being, being said, you know, it's, it's, it's a tough, tough call. I mean, it really is. I mean, I've, you know, being a developer and pro-development myself, you know, I like the layout of the plant, I just, I hate the location.
Well, I would have to parallel the staff's recommendations that Mr. Gurken's demonstrated, that he's in compliance with the LDC, the Land Development Code, he's in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Not to contradict earlier comments, but he has addressed all the essential services, water, fire, sewer, storm runoff, storm retention, and... That would be my comments of the case. Does Mr. Rhodes have anything to add?
You know, two sessions ago, we had the farm split up into long twenty-acre tracts. I despise that worse than this. At least you're utilizing all your ground.
Brad, do you have anything you'd like to comment on?
No, I think my only comment is, mirrored what Chris was saying, is I, I wish this was a little bit closer to a more urban area where the lots were smaller and we had a better transition. It appears we're going from, you know, Kansas City limits ends through a whole bunch of three, five, ten, twenty-acre lots, and now out in the middle of those, we have Johnson Ridge, which in my mind is complicating my decision on this. If Johnson Ridge wasn't there with the sewer, I don't think I could support this. But because we do have those services readily available, my only concern is that the location of this particular subdivision is problematic in the fact that it really doesn't look like anything that's out here. And I still don't think it looks like Johnson Ridge because Johnson Ridge did have so much green space added in. I don't think it's still a fair comparison on the way this subdivision is laid out with less than an acre lot stacked on top of each other and trying to compare that to Johnson Ridge with all of the excessive green space. When you drive through that subdivision, it doesn't feel like a subdivision in Kansas City. This is going to feel like a subdivision in Kansas City. It's just going to be house after house with nothing but a driveway, looking at a garage and a house, and there's nothing else that can go on this property. That's my only concern.
All right. Terry, do you have any input on the case?
I just briefly addressed the traffic and road issues. As they was said, 132nd Street can handle the additional traffic. We looked at how many, at the eighteen additional lots, that's maybe thirty-six additional vehicles when the subdivision is completely built out. The traffic on Eastern, there was a number that was cited by one gentleman, he did call the highway department. The number that he asked for, however, was at the north end of WHB Road, which connects to Eastern at the north end up by 92, and actually, the traffic counts down on Eastern are much higher already than what they are up by 92. The additional cars, we don't feel like are going to make a significant difference on the traffic going south on Eastern. And I would assume that not all the cars will go south on Eastern every day. Some of them are going to go north, and some of them are going to go west on 132nd Street over towards Mount Olivet.
All right.
So, we think the traffic is manageable.
All right. Well, does the, any board members have any other questions or comments for staff? Would call for a motion to approve the rezoning of the Eastern Estates and Burton Estates as presented in the staff's report? Do you have a motion to either approve or deny?
I'm going to move to approve, and, you know, I'm going to make another comment here. I mean, this is a very tough decision for all of us up here. You know, we talk about lots that are in Kansas City, I mean, those lots are a fourth third of an acre, you know, they're twelve, fifteen thousand square feet. I've developed them, I know. These are forty, forty-two thousand square feet. I mean, they're still four times the size of a Kansas City lot or, or basically a regular subdivision lot. You know, I get that, you know, it's not an acre and a half, it's not an acre and a quarter, 1.2 acres, but I think that they've, you know, they've completed everything that the staff has asked them to do to be in compliance with the comprehensive plan. And so, I feel it's my obligation as a member up here to at least get them to the next step, and at that point, they can decide whether or not it's going to get approved fully.
All right, we have a motion for approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
Very well, do we have a roll call of vote?
Marvin Davis.
Approved.
David Rotis.
Approved.
Terry Griffin.
Approved.
Chris Higgins.
I'm going to deny.
Brad Scarlett.
I'm going to deny.
And Chairman Tom Decker.
Approved.
Motion carries.
Like to roll right into the preliminary plat, and I think the preliminary plat's got fifteen main items with some sub-items below those, but would like to call for a motion to either... Like to call for a motion to either approve or deny the preliminary plat of Eastern Estates and Burton Estates with the conditions set forth in Exhibit A attached. Have a motion to either approve or deny.
I move to approve with conditions.
Very well, do you have a second?
Second.
Do we have a roll call of vote?
Marvin Davis.
Approve with conditions.
David Rotis.
Approve with conditions.
Terry Griffin.
Approved with conditions.
Chris Higgins.
Denied.
Brad Scarlett.
Denied.
And Chairman Tom Decker.
Approved with conditions.
Motion carries.
The second case we'll hear this evening is case number April 22-123A. Could we have a staff's report, please?
And I just want it noted that nobody wants to stay and listen to Shane. So, if you, if you step out, will you please go downstairs and have conversations downstairs? It'll get very loud if you're outside the door talking.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Tough decision, guys. Can we get the door, maybe? Can we get the door?
I don't think we can close the door, Kevin.
He has those doors and locks. Shane will talk really loud.
Ready for him?
Do you want me to re-announce the case?
No, we're good. If you're ready for Shane.
Do we have a staff report, please?
Chairman, I would like to add this staff report to the official record.
So be it.
So, this is the annual zoning map request where essentially what we're...
Speak up a little bit, Shane.
Is it? Yeah, it should be. Can you hear? Is that better?
Little more, little more.
Okay. So, this is the yearly request to update the zoning map per the LDC. So, the last one we did was, would have been the 2020 version that was approved on February 11th, 2021. So, what we're doing here is we're approving, it'd be the 2021 map. So, what this is, is the zoning map reflects all zoning changes that were approved by the county commission. This, it's pretty standard of what we do, at least under findings, we have stated that it is important to have a current, accurate, and updated zoning map available to all interested parties. A current map aids in providing correct information to the public and is essential to staff for frequent review, analysis of proposed development projects. Staff would be happy to answer. Any questions the commission might have?
So, the updated map, Shane, is where we've approved any minor subdivisions or changing of the rezoning and such as would, it's all been updated as of December 31st, 21?
Yes, Chairman, as long as it's been approved by the county commission.
Okay. Yep, very well. Are these available in 24 by 36 copies?
Yeah, we got one over here.
And we're staying until you can...
I'm serious, can I get a 24 by 36?
Yes, you can have the one that's sitting over there, and we're staying until you pick out every property that was rezoned.
I know where I live, but that's not it, so... Oh, hey, thank you. Well, I would call for a motion to either approve or deny the P&amp;Z's request for approval of the updated 2021 zoning map. If, do we have a motion, please?
Approved.
Very well, do you have a second?
Second.
Do we have a roll call of vote?
Brad Scarlett. Chris Higgins.
Approved.
Terry Griffin.
Approved.
David Rotis.
Approved.
Marvin Davis.
Approved.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Approved.
Motion carries. Yes, you can have that. And I, I do have...
Meeting's adjourned?
Then I'll give my comments after the meeting's adjourned. I just want to update you on the previous cases. All the cases from last month, which included like the conditional use permit for the stable, the land development code amendments for the beekeeping and accessory dwelling units, those were all approved, even the, the lot that was less than five acres, it was approved, Walker Ranch. And then, if you remember Eagleview at 124th and A Highway, they had to get their variance for the septics on less than five acres. That was denied, so they are going to come back with a new proposal. You'll see that most likely next month. So, that's the update I have, and I guess the meeting's...
That was, is there a deal, adjustment, the Eagles landing, or that went through the...
And thank you for the discussion.
Yep.
Still friends, Chris?
Absolutely. It's a good one. I guess it's a decision I haven't gone with, too.
You know what sucks is my doctor was one of the opposers, and I had a few...